Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Council meeting. I am Congressman Kevin Jeffries.
Yes, I am not the mayor and I am not the council president. They are both absent today, so I was asked to run the meeting. And you'll notice, usually the mayor doesn't have a vote, but I am not the mayor. So I will get to vote today as we proceed through the agenda. It's just that quick little announcement for you. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, and Counselor Rudin has volunteered to lead us in that. Thank you, Alan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Rudin. We will start our meeting off with some time for public comment from the citizens. If any of you have anything you'd like to share with the council, now's the time to do that. But before we start into that, I just want to make sure you're aware that anything that is on the agenda, the public hearing that's on the agenda posted for tonight, we ask that you wait to speak on your issue as it comes up on the agenda. Also, if there's anything that is scheduled for maybe an agenda item in the near future, anything that is a topic, sorry, anything that is a matter of litigation or a quasi-judicial land use issue, again, ask that you wait until that issue comes before us to talk about it. And so, having said that, is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council tonight? Yes, come on in. City fair, boy. Thank you, sir.
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. This is on the consent agenda, but I spoke with the city manager. I just want to make some comments. I don't need it pulled from the consent agenda, if that's okay. I don't have a, it's regarding the garbage rate proposal that you're going to be approving this evening. I don't have a problem with the proposal, I think. Recology's doing a fine job. You know, I've looked through it. I think it's okay. So I don't want to comment on that. I just like to comment on the process in a general sort of way, in two ways. One, I mean, I think garbage rates are one of the important things that the city's responsible for. I mean, this is basically a monopoly you've granted to one company that's going to generate $6 million in revenue this year. And I think just the option, whether it's one hearing where you open the hearing and close the hearing and nobody says anything, you know, I just think that generally letting the public have an opportunity to comment on something like that is pretty important. So I hope, you know, in the future, and I understand that there's going to be future opportunities to discuss this, you know, it's going to come up. The second point is, I'm still puzzled by the future of where we're going in the city on this. I raised this issue with the council last year, and I'm going to raise it again. I'll keep raising it until I figure out what's happening. But our garbage rates are based on generating garbage. Our garbage company drives around in trucks that say "Waste Zero." You know, we're busy trying to reduce the amount of garbage we're creating, and we're adding services, you know, picking up yard debris, picking up glass, we're already doing recycling. We've got a whole bunch of services we're providing that aren't being paid for. Essentially, they're being charged for out of the garbage rates. And I'm okay with that. That makes a certain amount of sense. You know, if you're throwing away garbage, you know, maybe you should pay a little more. But it seems to me like, in the long run, that that's not going to be a winning proposition if we actually go towards Waste Zero and reduce the amount of garbage we're producing. We're going to have to keep raising the garbage rates higher and higher to, you know, to cover all these other services we're asking for. And it seems to me like, you know, Recology's, you know, pretty sharp people. I think the manager over there is a CPA. It seems like they ought to be thinking about this and probably know what they're planning to do. But I think it would be good if we had a discussion and, you know, talk to the citizens about what's happening. We've got a transfer station opening. I mean, as we start reducing the amount of garbage we're generating and people, you know, pay for smaller services, they're going to be paying less for garbage, which is good for them. But I don't see how Recology continued to operate without significant rate increases. So I think there ought to be a public discussion of, you know, how we're going to handle, you know, that point when we reach it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. We are going to be bringing this up again in July, am I right?
Yes.
Probably July.
July.
Late July.
So we're planning on having a Waste Management Day, Little Capital Race Management Day in late July. So stay tuned for that. Anything else you'd like to bring? Yes?
Dave Adams, KLYC Radio and Operation Eagle's Wings, which is a statewide veterans outreach we're doing here in McMinnville. We've, we're starting initiative petition or a petition drive to revisit the issue of Leonard DeWitt and his Medal of Honor. Leonard passed away in, earlier this year, and he was given the Distinctive Service Cross for actions in the Pacific Island in Papua New Guinea where he single-handedly held off nighttime raid of 100 Japanese soldiers. And the commanding officers there said that he deserved a Medal of Honor for what he did. Apparently, that was stuck with one of the generals of the time that, for political reasons, didn't further it on. And so, what has been happening in the last couple of years is there's been an effort to try to get him his Medal of Honor. Well, sadly, Leonard DeWitt passed away, and the effort has kind of died with him. So we're revisiting that. What it's going to take is, we are trying to show support from the community to Congressman Greg Walden. We've chosen Congressman Greg Walden because he's a Republican. We have to go to the White House and convince President Trump to give at least the memory of Leonard his Medal of Honor. What I'm here to ask is the city council to issue a referendum or some kind of show of support for our effort to see that this man who single-handedly saved the day in Papua New Guinea is just recognition. So, open any questions?
Any questions? All right. Go ahead, Adam.
When they put that statue up at Oregon Mutual, I attended that, and Mr. DeWitt was there for that. That was before he passed.
Right.
I appreciate your guys' efforts in moving forward that. Me personally, I would like to see him get that recognition, even though he has passed. I think it would be closure for his family.
His family is pretty disappointed that it's just kind of fallen through the cracks, and there's been interest lost in it. His son lives in Bend, his wife still lives here in McMinnville. And it would be, I think, it's just the right thing to do. So people can go online to our website, klyc.us, or eagles1776.com, and sign the petition online. We have talked to Congressman Walden's office. He seems to be willing to take it to the president. We do not want to go with the Democrats because it's somewhat hostile between the two parties in Washington, D.C. right now, so it's best to go with Congressman Walden.
Excellent. Would you mind coming back at our next dinner meeting and talking with the full council and the mayor and the council president about this?
Sure.
Because I think there's a lot of support here, but I don't want to speak for the mayor. I'd like to have him be a part of that conversation.
Okay, there's no time thing that's really driving this, so, yeah, we have time.
Okay.
Counselor Jeffries, if it's the will of the body here, I'd be happy to have that conversation with the mayor and the council president. I meet with them on a regular basis, and assuming some consent, we can work with Dave to put together a resolution and bring it to the council at a future meeting.
Does the council feel comfortable with that staff direction?
I do. I think it's, I appreciate that.
We have the help also from Alicia Hamel, who is the Oregon National Guard military historian, who has done the digging of finding out the corroboration and the testimony and so on and so forth. And I don't want to, you know, go into the minutia here. There's quite a bit of corroboration that the incident did in fact happen.
All right.
So.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any other desire from the public for comment? All right, we'll move on with the agenda, moving into a proclamation. Do we have any firemen in the audience today? Just a few?
Come on up here, boy.
It's weird from this side.
Well, I have here a proclamation, and it is in honor of the Fill the Boot campaign that the firemen do every year, so I'll go ahead and read that. Whereas McMinnville Fire Department, as well as the majority of fire departments across America, have been working with Muscular Dystrophy Association in their fight against neuromuscular disease. In recent years, there have been significant modifications and treatments developed with great success due to the money raised through Fill the Boot. And whereas Fill the Boot is an opportunity for Oregon firefighters to ask community members to drop donations into their fire boots to help local families affected by muscular disease. This year marks the 62nd anniversary of the partnership between firefighters and MDA in the fight against muscular waste disease. And whereas McMinnville Fire Department has spent many hours collecting money for this worthwhile cause, firefighters locally and nationally are the largest contributors to the MDA. In 2016, the McMinnville firefighters collected $17,600 to help the fight against 43 different types of neuromuscular diseases. Now, therefore, I'm reading on behalf of the mayor, I, Scott Hill, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of McMinnville, to hereby proclaim July 7th and 8th, 2017, as McMinnville Fire Department Fill the Boot Day. And witness thereof, I have here on to sign, set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this, what day is it? 27th day of, that's not right, yes, 27th day of July, of June 2017. It says July on the thing. And signed Scott Hill. Thank you very much. Thank you. On our agenda, we have a presentation by Gary Eastland of the Hagan Hamilton Group, and he is not in the audience today, and so we will be moving that over.
Sorry, I got you first.
We'll be moving that over into the next meeting. And I'm jumping over the place, I'm sorry. We also have a public hearing scheduled, which is before Gary's presentation, so he could be coming any minute. We have a public hearing on the proposed supplemental budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2017, and this is related to the Airport Maintenance Fund. Mike or Marcia, do you want to give us a, Marcia? Do you want to give us a little summary on this?
This public hearing is required because the supplemental budget that we have later on the agenda for this evening is more than 10% of the expenditures in the Airport Maintenance Fund.
All right, so I will open the public hearing. Is anyone in the public, in the audience, like to speak on this public hearing? Mark? No? All right, going once, going twice. I hereby close the public hearing. And Gary Eastland is not here, so we will hold that over until next time. And we have before us the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of the October 13, 2015 meeting, the approval of the recology rates, as well as a liquor license application by Open Claim Vineyards LLC located at 2803 Northeast Orchard Avenue. I will ask the council if there's any items on this that they would like to remove off the consent agenda. Hearing no objections to the consent agenda, I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselors Stassen and a second by Counselor, excuse me, Garvin. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Let it show that the consent agenda has been approved and adopted. That takes us into resolutions. So first, we have the Resolution Number 2017-41, a resolution increasing the planning permitting fees by approximately 1.7% for fiscal year 2017-18, effective July 1, 2017. Heather, you want to give us an update on that?
Sure. Good evening, Counselors. So Resolution Number 2003-35 that was adopted in 2003 had a premise in it that the planning department would review planning department fees based on the Portland CPI index and then raise them accordingly. So we have done that every year. Last year, it was nominal, so we didn't raise the fees last year. This year, we're bringing to you the increase based on 1.7% because it has been, per the resolution, we're looking at the January CPI index for Portland, so.
All right, any questions? Any questions for Heather?
I have one, Heather.
Go ahead, Adam.
Is that just a straight across the board 1.7% on top of every fee that's charged by the planning?
Yes, yes. So you will see, we did round up the dollar value when it got into the cents, to the nearest five increment, either below or above, because it's easier for us in terms of our system in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
All right. No further discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2017-41.
So moved.
Second.
We have a move by Counselor Rudin, a second by Counselor Stassen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. We have Resolution Number 2017-42, a resolution adopting a supplemental budget for fiscal year 2016-17 and making supplemental appropriations. Again, this is at the airport.
Thank you, Counselor Jeffries and council members. As you know, Oregon local budget law does allow you to prepare a supplemental budget when an occurrence or condition that was not known at the time the budget was prepared requires a change to the budget. If the supplemental budget is less than 10% of the fund's expenditures, a public hearing is not required. If the supplemental budget will increase the expenditures in the fund by more than 10%, a public hearing is required to, before the governing body can adopt the supplemental budget. So the supplemental budget in the resolution that you have before you tonight has two parts. One is for the telecommunications fund, and the city there collects franchise fees and turns over a portion of that to the McMinnville Community Media. We actually collected or received more in franchise fees than what we anticipated, so we need to increase the budget to allow us to disperse the funds to MCM, and that's as provided in our contract with them. We also need a supplemental budget in the airport fund. Here, there was an unanticipated change in the runway rehabilitation project. The appropriations that were included in the budget in the original budget for 2016-17 was based on an agreement with the FAA that was executed in April of 2016. In February of this year, the agreement was amended, and that was for relocation of some FAA facilities that were impacted by the project. Total cost of this change is about $541,000, and the amended agreement does include a provision for the FAA to reimburse the city for those costs. The increase in the airport fund is more than 10%, as we previously mentioned, and therefore, the governing body is required to hold a public hearing, which we just did. And also, the public hearing was published in the News Register as required by law. A motion is needed to approve this resolution this evening.
All right, any questions? All right, seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2017-42.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Garvin and a second by Counselor Stassen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion, or the resolution passes unanimously. And then we have Resolution Number 2017-43, a resolution making a budgetary transfer of appropriation authority for fiscal year 2016-17. Marcia?
Thank you. This is a budgetary transfer. The difference between this and the resolution that you just saw as a supplemental budget actually increases the appropriation. This resolution is transferring funds from the ambulance contingency to the ambulance personal services appropriation. And we're estimating that the expenditures in the ambulance fund will exceed the adopted amount by about $65,000. This is really, in September of 2016, the council approved two additional firefighter EMT positions, and they were to act as floaters, reducing the number of overtime shifts worked by ambulance personnel. The additional positions did reduce the cost of overtime for shift coverage as we had anticipated. However, there were some unexpected injuries and vacancies, and overtime costs, we will expect that they will exceed the budget. In addition, there were some of our part-time employees that were used for shift coverage, so their, the costs of the part-time employees will also exceed the budget. The local budget law does allow us to do, make a transfer of appropriation in the fund, and that, this resolution that is before you tonight makes that transfer appropriation from contingency to personal services. Add to that, Chief.
Oh.
Okay.
All right. Any questions? Thank you, Marcia. Nope. All right, seeing no questions, I will ask a motion to approve Resolution 2017-43.
So moved.
Second.
A move by Counselor Stassen and a second by Counselor Garvin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The resolution passes unanimously. Moving on, we have Resolution 2017-44, a resolution providing for and approving a form of contract by and between the city of McMinnville, Oregon, and the McMinnville Rural Fire Protection District. Chief?
Counselors, this is our annual visit to the Rural Fire Protection District contract, which we are providing services for both fire protection and fire prevention. Within the contract, it obligates the rural district to a guaranteed 3% increase. This year, we have worked with them for a 5% increase, so you'll see the difference in the contract this year compared to previous years. Due to some of the PERS and insurance issues that we're dealing with internally, they've agreed to try and help carry the load. In addition, within their budget this year, they've allocated $25,000 outside of the contract to refurbish, or refurbish one of our wildland brush rigs to try and improve our response capabilities into the rural areas.
All right. Any questions, the chief? I have a question. You mentioned the $25,000, is that like an in-kind contribution, or how is that?
That will be a grant.
A grant?
Right. We will, we will conduct the purchase, and they will give them the, and they will reimburse it immediately.
Okay.
Or, we have, we have not contractually obligated the way the payment will be handed. They're going to hand us $25,000 to use for the purposes of that equipment.
Okay. All right, thanks. Which is a little budget.
Sorry.
So, if there's no, if there's not any additional questions, I will ask for a motion to, a motion to.
More question.
Yeah, go ahead.
What, what kind of capabilities are we upgrading on that brush rig? Is it like, we're looking to pump more water, hold more water, or what's?
It will run when we need it to. We're running on a, what we're, what we're replacing and upgrading is the skid unit or the firefighting unit in it, that currently, we have some issues with the foam application. We are going to try and get a larger water capacity tank on it. This is one of those skids that slides into the pickup truck. So it's just a little four-wheel-drive unit that can shoot up into the rural areas or in fields. So we're looking at, we're going to try and make sure that we can get something that is reliable out in the field. And new skids are run anywhere from $12,000 to $17,000, and then installation, so.
Thank you.
So moved.
So, I need a motion to approve Resolution 2017-44, and we've got a motion by Counselor Garvin and a second by Counselor Stassen. And so, I'll ask, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. The resolution passes unanimously. Moving into Resolution Number 2017-45, a resolution adopting a new fee schedule for ambulance services provided by the city of McMinnville and repealing Resolution 2016-35. Chief?
We're looking at requesting a 2.2% increase on our rates across both in-city and outside the city. And again, that's based on CPI, second half of the last fiscal year, or last CPI year end. Year end? Year end.
All right, any questions? I have one. Since most of the people we're picking up these days are either Medicare, Medicaid, or private insurance, how likely are we to see a 2.2% increase in our accounts receivable if those are contractual, you know, often there's?
A 2.2% increase in the fee schedule will not be a return to 2.2% on our billables. It will, it will be a 2.2% on bills that do not have either federal or state restrictions on allowable charges. So those, those individuals with insurances or self-pays, we should see a 2.2% return. Our collection rate on those accounts is above 85%, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, so.
So typically, when you bill private insurance, they pay what you want, what you ask, or is there a negotiated, like, you ask for 200, and they say, "We'll pay 100"?
No, we have no contracts with any of the, with any of the insurance carriers. There is no contracts. We only have the non-allowables by the federal and state Medicare and Medicaid programs that we have to not take into consideration as far as the, as the collection rates. About 17% are, fall outside of the non-allowable Medicare/Medicaid group of our calls.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the approved Resolution 2017-45.
So moved.
Second.
We have a move by Counselor Stassen and a second by Counselor Rudin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion passes unanimously. And we have Resolution Number 2017-46, a resolution declaring the city's election of, election to receive state revenues. Marcia?
Thank you. This is a resolution that allows the city basically to receive state shared revenues, which, as you know, are cigarette and liquor and OLCC, soon-to-be marijuana tax. So in order to receive the distribution, however, the city is required to elect to receive the distributions by enacting, enactment of a resolution and filing that resolution with the state. We also must hold one public hearing, giving the citizens an opportunity to comment, and that hearing was held in front of the Budget Committee as required. We also held one public hearing in front of the council, which also gave the citizens an opportunity to comment. And the other requirement is that a property tax was levied in the previous year. City has held the public hearings and levied the property taxes required by the ORS. So again, this resolution meets the requirement that the city enact a resolution. So again, this resolution meets the requirement that the city enact a resolution to receive the state revenue sharing funds.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to, to approve Resolution 201746.
The move.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Stassen and a second by Counselor Garben. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The resolution passes unanimously. That takes us to Resolution Number 201747, a resolution extending the city of McMinnville's workers' compensation coverage to the city of McMinnville's volunteers. You do this every year, correct?
Do, yes.
All right, let's do it again.
The ORS allows the city to elect to have volunteers covered by our workers' comp insurance. We have to file a written application with our insurer, CIS, which we do every year. We must also submit a resolution to CIS declaring our intent to cover those volunteers, and we must provide a description of the work that's to be performed by the volunteers. So this resolution then extends the workers' comp coverage to our city of McMinnville volunteers and meets the requirements of the ORS and CIS.
Okay. Any questions?
I had one.
Ms. Allen.
What constitutes a volunteer at this level? In other words, we're volunteers, or workman's comp premiums paid on us? Is it every volunteer across every department and...
Yes, we're actually required to keep a roster of those volunteers and track the hours that they work for, so yes, actually, the city council and other boards and commissions are covered under the volunteer workers' comp policy.
And one more question. Do you have the total number of volunteers that are covered by the city?
I do not. I believe in our budget document, which I actually happen to have with me. We do have a schedule.
Any guesses, Counselor? Who's in the closest?
1,200.
So volunteers? 1,200.
Oh, that's, I thought it was 176?
If you're counting Park and Rec.
All the coaches?
Like the Price is Right. Who's, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna guess. 1,300.
Can't go over.
I'm gonna actually say 1176.
Wait.
I'm gonna say...
1125. You...
$1,369.
Ah. Shoot, who said 1,200?
Way to go. Thank you. Good?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
All right.
Now we know.
So, thank you, Marcia. So I will entertain a motion. There's no, any other questions? A motion to approve Resolution 201747.
The move.
Second.
We have a, a motion by Counselor Stassen and a second by Counselor Rudin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The resolution passes unanimously. We have Resolution Number 201748, a resolution certifying provisions of municipal service by the city of McMinnville as required by ORS 211, 221.760. Marcia.
Thank you. This resolution also applies to state revenue sharing. It does, however, the ORS does designate that as a city that is in a county with population of more than 100,000, that the city must certify that they are providing certain municipal services, and those services include police or fire, street construction, sanitary storm sewers, planning, zoning, and subdivision, and city does provide those municipal services. So this resolution is certifying that and allows us to receive the state revenue sharing.
All right. Thank you. Any questions on this one? So I will entertain a motion to approve Resolution 201748.
The move.
Second.
A motion by Counselor Rudin and a second by Counselor Garben. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The resolution passes unanimously. That takes us to Resolution 201749, a resolution adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, making appropriations imposing, imposing the property taxes and categorizing the property taxes. This is the big one, Marcia.
Yes, it is. Thank you. As you know, the city's Budget Committee did meet on May 17, and they approved the fiscal year 2017-18 budget as proposed by the Budget Officer and did not make any amendments to the proposed budget. The budget that is being presented to you this evening, however, does include a couple of changes that I wanted to mention, and local budget law does allow the city to make these changes. The first one that I wanted to mention, primarily, they are projects that are being carried over that would not be completed in the current fiscal year, that we did not know that when we adopted the budget, so the, the appropriations for those projects are being carried over to 2017-18. So in the Airport Maintenance Fund, we have about $57,000 that we are carrying forward into the next year. In the Transportation Fund, there's about $475,000 in appropriation for bond-related projects. Those projects include the First and Second Street pedestrian improvements and Second Street and Alpine Avenue street improvements. In the Park Development Fund, we also have $120,000 in appropriation that's being carried forward, and that project is the Northwest Neighborhood Park. We also have some projects in the Wastewater Capital Fund relating to in the filtration system expansion and INI reduction projects, and that amount is $317,000. I did want to mention one other change that we did make in the budget. Our Park and Rec Director came, came to us not too long ago and mentioned that we may have to replace the main water heater at the community center, and we did not budget for that in 2017-18. So we did increase the appropriations in the Park and Rec Department to allow us to replace that heater if we do need to do that. I did also want to mention that the budget that you have before you tonight, the 2017-18 budget, we did not adjust this budget, the revenue in this budget and appropriations to reflect the additional transient lodging tax that we anticipate will be generated by the tax-free increase that was adopted by the council at the last council meeting. We certainly can do a supplemental budget next year in, after July 1 of 2017, and at, you know, as the year progresses, we will have a much better idea of what the amount is that we will need to adjust the budget. And as I mentioned to the city manager, it could be with the Eclipse, maybe we will far exceed anything that we had budgeted for the next year. So I would ask that the council adopt this resolution, which is required by local budget law.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
I have one. Marcia, where, with the additional money for the, the heater that, or that's required at the community center, where is the money pulled from? Where did you shift the money from?
Actually, there were some other repairs and maintenance projects that were included in the current Park and Rec Community Center budget that did not get completed. So the increase that we're doing next year is for a different project, but really, there were projects that we didn't complete in this year, and the director felt like the, of course, if the wa, water heater goes out, that will be the priority over some other projects that we did budget for.
Okay. So just shifted funds? Okay.
But there's no increase to the overall budget total? It was just the category and that, within that subcategory of the budget was changed?
Well, it actually is an increase in the appropriation in the budget. However, the funds that we would have spent this year are being carried forward to next year, and so we're making those funds available to spend by increasing the appropriation.
Okay. And is that reflective in the resolution totals?
Yes, it is.
Changes? Okay. Thank you. All right. So if there's no additional questions, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 201749.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2017-49, a resolution adopting the 2017-2018 budget in the total amount of $114,773,667 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, to make the appropriations in the amount of $77,684,600 to impose and categorize the city of McMinnville's permanent property tax rate of 5.0200 per 1,000 assessed value for general operations and $3,486,85 for debt service.
Thank you. We have a motion by Counselor Stassen, the second to that motion. You don't have to repeat it.
Second.
Second by Counselor Rudin. So, so, I have to read this all, don't I? So Counselor Stassen's moves and Counselor Rudin, second to adopt Resolution Number 201749, adopting the 2017-2018 budget in the total amount of 1,100, 114,773,667 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, to make the appropriations in the amount of 77,680, man, those millions really mess me up, amount of 77,684,600 to impose the categori, and categorize the city of McMinnville's per, permanent property tax rate of 5.0200 per 1,000 assessed value for general operations and $3,486,085 for debt services. So having said that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The resolution passes unanimously. Which takes us to Resolution Number 201750, a resolution awarding the contract for the Northwest Hill Road Improvement Project.
Thank you, council. Refer you to the brief memo that's in your packet as well as the proposed resolution awarding the construction contract for the Northwest Hill Road Project, and it also refer you to the vicinity map that was included within the packet. As you know, the 2014 voter-approved transportation bond measure included several large transportation capital projects, the largest being the Northwest Hill Road corridor between Second Street and Baker Creek Road. This project will improve that roadway to urban arterial standards, including bike lanes, sidewalks, landscaping, turn lanes, traffic control, drainage, et cetera. The project does include roundabouts at the Hill Road and Wallace Road intersection, as well as the Hill Road and Baker Creek Road intersections. Construction is planned to start later this summer and be completed late calendar year 2018. On Thursday, June 15, we opened bids for the project. Seven bids were received. The bids were checked against the criteria within the contract. The bid from Pacific Excavation Company in the amount of $6,975,000 was deemed to be the lowest responsible and responsive bid. The project is included in the budget that you just adopted, and funds will be used, a combination of transportation bond measure funds and system development charges that have been collected from new development, so. Unless there are any questions, staff would recommend that you adopt the resolution awarding the construction contract to Pacific Excavation Company.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Any questions for staff? All right. If there's no questions, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 201750.
The move.
Second.
We have a, a motion by Counselor Stassen and a second by Counselor Garben. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. The resolution passes unanimously. That takes us to Resolution 201751, a resolution ratifying an amend, amendment to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of McMinnville and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 3099, for part-time plus employees to be represented by the bargaining group in a period starting July 1, 2017. Chief.
Counselors, if you recall, March of last year, we were working with AMITI on partnership to deploy a peak activity unit Monday through Fridays. The result of that project was conversations with the local IFF 3099 at that time. They agreed to delay bargaining the part-time plus members that we were hiring until we could ensure that we would meet the requirements of the contract and the costs associated with the positions that we had thought they would play out, but we weren't certain, and we wanted to make sure that we got to that point. We committed to them that once we reached the point, and if we were going to recommend moving it into the, the next fiscal budget as a, as a continued permanent partnership, that we would come back to the table and work through the process with them to bring the part-time, the two part-time plus positions that we currently have into the union. And, and this, this contract that you have in the resolution are what we've worked, the union has already ratified the agreement as, that you see in front of you. The, the cost changes that are associated as a bottom dollar are specific to the insurance plan because the bargaining group is in a different high deductible VIBA plan than the, than the general government is. What you're seeing there is the difference in the, in the VIBA and the premium costs associated with the contractual requirements. Believe bringing the part-time plus positions in is a win-win really in the long run. The processes of, of general government firefighters and, and union firefighters, it makes the, the internal processes, the policies, much easier and smoother, and at the end, they become bargaining group members.
All right. Any questions for the chief? Okay. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion approving Resolution 201751.
The move.
A move by Counselor Garben and a second by Counselor Stassen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Let's show the resolution passed unanimously. This takes us into ordinances, and we have a second reading of ordinance Number 5023. Do you want me to read all that? Or you'd like to read?
No, I'll do it for you.
All right. Thank you.
So this is a second reading of ordinance Number 5023, an ordinance amending the McMinnville zoning ordinance specific to Section 17.53.101L, land division standards, street grades and curves to allow local street grades up to and including 15%.
All right. Any, Heather, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
I just wanted to report back, you had some dialogue about ensuring that the, the aerial fire truck was able to make it up to 15% grade. The chief explained to you at our dinner meeting that with the fire sprinkling that was occurring on the homes, that any homes where the access was above a 12% grade, that they'd be fire sprinkled, and so that dismissed that concern about the aerial truck. And then also, we visited with Recology and the McMinnville School District again to make sure that they were comfortable with the code as well. Recology and the develop, and a developer who's working on this type of grade of streets got together and are talking about contingency plans during extreme weather circumstances to ensure that Recology's team is safe. So I wanted to get back to you with that.
All right. Any other questions for Heather?
No, all my questions were answered and concerned, so thank you.
All right. All right. So David, I'll ask you to, to a second reading again?
Sure, I just did that.
You did.
We can skip that part.
Excellent. You're the boss. If you say it's legal, I'm good with that. So I ask for a motion to the ordinance Number 2000, or sorry, 5023.
The move.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Stassen and a second by Counselor Rudin. And no, it's no other discussion from the council? All right, I'll ask that, Melissa, would you please poll the council? And poll me last, please.
Counselor Garben?
Yeah.
Counselor Stassen?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor Jeffries?
No. Ordinance Number 5023 is adopted of a vote of three to one. We have, again, a second reading, ordinance Number 5024. David?
Sure. It's a second reading for ordinance Number 5024, an ordinance amending planned development ordinance Number 5868, to allow exceptions to current street grade, block length, block circumference, and lot depth.
street grade, block length, block circumference, and lot depth to wet standards and to amend and approve residential subdivision and phasing plan on approximately one hundred and thirty-two acres of land.
All right. Heather, anything else for this one?
Nothing else to add for this one, thank you.
Okay. I will ask for a motion from the council.
I'm moved.
Second.
I'm finished.
Let me. We now consider the second reading of Ordinance Number five zero two-four, and would you, did you read it already?
Been read, yep.
You read it already, okay. So, we have a motion by Councilor Rudin and a second by Councilor Stassen's, and I will ask the council if there's any discussion on this, on this ordinance?
No.
No? Any questions for staff? All right. Hearing none. Melissa, would you pull the council, please, and pull me last?
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Stassen's?
Aye.
Councilor Rudin?
Aye.
Councilor Jeffries?
No. Ordinance Number five zero two-four has passed as with a three to one vote. That takes us to the first reading with possible second reading of Ordinance Number five zero two-seven.
I'll read it after the recording.
Okay. This is an ordinance adopting the McMinnville Zone Ordinance and dealing with the landscape, landscaping and trees. And Heather, could you give us a staff report on this, please?
Sure, I'm actually gonna have Chuck Darnell, our associate planner, give you a staff report on this, but just to introduce it, we are starting to make an effort to look at the zoning ordinance and review it for updates. One of our first chapters that we're looking at, our first two chapters is landscaping and trees. It was reviewed by the Landscape Review Committee with a recommendation to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission then worked through it and are bringing a recommendation to you tonight that Chuck will share with you.
Good evening, counselors. So, I will go through the, the ordinance that's before you tonight. It is amending chapter seventeen point five seven, the landscaping, and seventeen point five eight, trees, and then as well as some minor amendments to the definitions chapter of the zoning ordinance. Just for some background, so those chapters of the zoning ordinance began to be reviewed by the Landscape Review Committee. They started to look at the ordinance language late in two thousand and sixteen over a series of three or four meetings. They reviewed the existing language and looked at what potential updates might be required. And the reason for that was just to ensure consistency with our current programs, how we operate, how we review plans through the process at this point, and then to consider any updates that might be required to reflect our practices and current industry standards. So, the Landscape Review Committee met through those series of meetings. We developed some draft amendments that they moved forward to for consideration by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission held the first public hearing on those amendments at their March sixteenth meeting. We did receive some public testimony and receive some comments and suggestions from the public for additional consideration, so the public hearing was continued by the Planning Commission to allow us time to work on those suggestions. We did follow up with those that testified, brought the suggestions back to the Landscape Review Committee. Some additional changes were made, which they reviewed again, endorsed, and then suggested that those go before the Planning Commission again for final consideration, which occurred at the last Planning Commission meeting on May eighteenth, so they opened the public hearing again and unanimously recommended approval of the ordinance updates to you tonight for your consideration. So, I'll, in your, in your packet, in the staff report, and in the ordinance itself, the actual language with bold and strike through, show all the changes that are being proposed and reasoning for those changes in the staff report. So, I'll provide a higher level overview of the main components that are proposed to be amended in the chapters. In the landscaping, it includes the purpose and intent section, the review and inspection process, committee bylaws. In the trees, it's the purpose and intent section again, applicability section, review process, and some of our street tree planning standards and replacement and maintenance requirements. So, the purpose and intent section in the landscape chapter was revised pretty substantially. It's much more comprehensive now, and it includes more objectives and specific reasonings for requiring landscaping. That was developed with the Landscape Review Committee and some suggestions from the public. Specifically, the McMinnville chapter of the Native Plant Society provided some feedback on that. So, the Landscape Review Committee can use that purpose and intent statement when they're reviewing landscape plans against the review criteria in the code. The bylaws that currently exist in the zoning ordinance right now that create the Landscape Review Committee are proposed to be removed from the zoning ordinance and inserted instead into the city code, and that's something you'll consider tonight as well under a separate ordinance, which we'll get into detail when we get into that. There aren't many major changes to the committee bylaws and process and membership, but just as a consolidation process, we're incorporating them into the city code instead of in the individual zoning ordinance chapter. As far as the review and inspection process for landscaping, we've updated some of the timeframes to be more consistent with what our, you know, having our monthly meeting and what our appeal periods are consistently across the board on all land use applications, and then some minor changes to the inspection process and allowing the planning department to do the inspections and allow for some minor changes during installation in the field. In the trees chapter, some of the bigger amendments are, one, to the applicability section. Currently, it was somewhat unclear whether a tree was applicable and was subject to the requirements in the trees chapter, so we updated the definition of those types of trees that are. We included an exemption for trees that are impacting public infrastructure that the adjacent property owner wouldn't be responsible for, to allow the city to assist in those types of tree removals. We created a downtown tree zone, which isn't amending any of the actual language itself, but reorganizing it all into one section in the code because downtown trees are very important here and they're treated differently, and so we consolidated all of that language in one section to make it a little more clear for people when they're trying to understand those regulations. The review process, again, just really to be more consistent with our typical timeframes and appeal periods, we did add a requirement that applicants provide costs associated with tree removals when they're applying. That was something the committee thought would be beneficial because a lot of times people move forward with a tree removal and don't understand the full cost of that, and so that was something that the committee thought would be important for people to understand before they apply and move forward with a tree removal. And then they did add the ability to request an arborist report for tree removal requests as well. As far as the planting standards, something we have been doing in our practice as we approve street tree plans is requiring people to plant to a city standard that was adopted in two thousand and fourteen, so now we specifically reference that in the code, and we include language in there that allows for those to be updated as may be adopted by the city in the future. We also have an approved street tree list that we refer people to when they're selecting trees to be planted in subdivisions and planter strips, and so we refer to that as well and allow for the LRC to make updates to that periodically because tree species change constantly and industry standards and climate and things change, so we want that ability there for the committee to do that. And that would come through the city council for approval as a resolution in the future if it did occur. As far as replacement requirements for trees, we, again, typically when we review something, if we approve it, we have a six-month timeframe on it, so we wanted to reference that in the code specifically, and then also give the LRC the ability to extend that timeframe to ensure that trees are planted in a time that promotes their survivability so that they're, you know, not planted in the middle of the summer when it's ninety-nine degrees, and we can promote people to plant those in the late fall when they'll survive better. And then as, in ongoing maintenance, we're proposing to add a statement that street trees are required to be maintained in perpetuity. That was always the intent, but it was somewhat unclear in the code, so we're adding that statement to that chapter. So, those are kind of the high-level changes that are proposed, and again, all the details in your packet, and I'd be happy to answer any more specific questions you might have.
I have a quick one, Chuck.
Yeah.
The maintenance, the tree maintenance, currently, that's how it's being handled. It just wasn't clearly addressed in the codes. Will that be a surprise to anybody who's then responsible for the tree maintenance by, that's by their house?
Yeah, well, we're not proposing to change any of the actual maintenance standards themselves other than that statement that it's maintained in perpetuity. There is a statement that exists in the language today that street trees are maintained and adopted landscape plans and street tree plans are maintained, but this, we thought, made it more clear, it is the responsibility of the adjacent property owner to maintain and care for the tree that's adjacent to their property in the public credit way, though, and that won't change.
Okay. And that's currently, that's the way it is, so.
Yeah.
Alan, do you have a question?
Yeah, just to follow up what Wendy was talking about on, on the maintenance. So, if, if the tree gets diseased or, or otherwise and dies, whose responsibility is to replace the tree?
The responsibility falls, again, on the adjacent property owner, whoever that is at the time, whether it's the developer still or property owner that's purchased the property. We have specific criteria that must be met to allow for a tree to be removed. Something being diseased is a pretty obvious one that we would generally approve. Often, we do require a replacement tree to be planted in the same location as the original land, or street tree plan that was approved, but, yeah, the responsibility does fall on the adjacent property owner. Unless it's in the downtown, those are treated differently, and the city's more involved in that.
And the enforcement of that falls on who?
So, the enforcement of that is, falls on the planning department. I think we're the ones that are responsible for enforcing the zoning ordinance standards, so when we become aware of issues, we have the code language to fall back on and, and following through with enforcement.
I just had one more question on the, in my ward where I live, just a few blocks away, that, there's a man that owns four rentals, normal houses in a row on one street, and he just came through with his chainsaw and cut off all the trees in his parkway so he wouldn't have to do maintenance anymore. And so, you got a street corridor of beautiful trees, and these were chainsawed off, and nothing's been done about that, and I thought that was interesting that, that someone would be able to do that, yet on the other hand, if someone applies to move a tree through the legal process of coming to the landscape, landscape review committee and going through that procedure just to move a tree for convenience sake, and it's, it seems like it's much easier just take your chainsaw and cut it down because there's no enforcement.
We had that happen on Alexandria a couple of years back, and they got, that guy got his wrist slapped pretty good, I remember.
Yeah, if I can respond to that, counselor. So, we have very limited resources in the planning department right now and are working at a sort of keep the door open policy for our programs, so we have the opportunity to respond and do enforcement if we're made aware of the issues. We don't, we do not have people out on the street proactively picking these, this up. That's just our reality in terms of the amount of staff we have. So, Councilor Rudin, if you want to provide that information to us, we will put it into our enforcement program.
I'll do it. Thank you.
And I believe, actually, so we encourage people to tell us about that, too, when we, you know, when they are aware of things, to let us know and share that information with us, and we actually did. Just a few weeks ago, someone in the northwest part of town came in for a tree removal and shared a few of those things, and I think what you're referring to was one of them, so actually just became aware of that one. So, as we receive those complaints, we do follow up on them.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, if, if there is a tree that's dead, it's been dead for a couple of years, I mean, how arduous is it for the landowner to be able to just remove it and get a new one put in there?
In terms of costs or?
Is there, is there a permitting? Is there a cost to come before the, the planning, the landscape review committee for the application for the new?
No. So, there is no fee for a tree removal request.
But to get an arborist certification, is that a requirement?
It's not a requirement. We have the ability to request one, and generally, we, if it's an obvious situation, we wouldn't. It's kind of been our practice, but we have the ability to request one in those situations where it's not clear. So, if there's obvious infrastructure damage, sidewalks are completely cracked, tree is obviously dead, not, no leaves on the tree or something like that, we generally wouldn't require one. We have the ability to request one if we're unclear, if the public works superintendent doesn't believe or agrees with the request, so. So, it's been our practice that we haven't required one in obvious situations, but there is no permit fee. I think the reasoning behind some of that might be that the property owner is incurring costs to do this and go through the replacement and removal process, so.
And is there a simple publication that can be shared with property owners? There's, there's a, there's a house, there's a, there's a house in my neighborhood that definitely needs to have some trees replaced, that they've been diseased for some time, but I do not think that the landowner is savvy enough to be able to wade through all this in order to do it the right way. So, it's, it's been left undone. So, is there any communication strategy, is something you can hand the landowner and say, "We recognize you have a diseased tree. Here's the steps to get it replaced"?
So, counselor, if, we do have a brochure about our tree program, so we can provide that. We're also working on a more robust communication program that we're gonna launch here in July and August so that we can get information out. Right now, are the tools we use to communicate, aren't communicating to everyone, so through the news register. So, what, what we hope to do is put together a social media tool program where we can get the word out on our programs a little bit more effectively, but if you want to point us in the right direction, we can also contact them and have that conversation.
Okay, thanks. Sarah?
Just taking a branch or two off a tree, is that something that needs to go before the review committee, or?
No, so we, we define major pruning as moving twenty percent or more of a canopy. So, if you're pruning small amounts, no, generally not. So, I mean, we don't ask somebody to approve how much of the percentage they're cutting off, but that, that language does exist there, and that's, that's what we define as a major pruning, so.
Gotcha. Other question was, going from the, the fifteen to thirty days or the five to fifteen, is that just standard procedure for most street tree programs? I mean, is that gonna hold up? I'd hate to see somebody's project get held up because they can't get their streets, their, their trees approved, but if the standard permit process is thirty days and the trees are thirty days, they turn them both at not the same time, they should flow in tandem.
Yeah. The reason we did that is the current language states that it has to be approved within ten days, which was somewhat burdensome in terms of calling a special meeting of the committee and getting a quorum together to, to review it. So, we have our monthly meeting every, every month. We left the language flexible, so it says can be or must be approved within thirty days, and the committee did acknowledge that when they were drafting that language. They wanted to keep that ability in there to have the ability to call a special meeting if someone had an emergency. The planning director also has the ability to approve something that's considered a public safety concern or an emergency, so, so that was considered, and, but, but the thirty-day timeframe is a little more standard in terms of allowing us to review something, provide a recommendation to the committee, giving them a chance to review it prior to the meeting.
And those are all calendar days or business days?
Those are calendar days.
Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
All right. If there's no other questions, I will ask the council if they would allow the, the city attorney to read this by title only. If you want to be mean, you can make him read the entire ordinance.
Higher than, no.
If there's no objection?
No objection.
All right. Could you please read it by title only?
Yes, this is a first reading, thank you, of Ordinance Number five zero two-seven, an ordinance amending the McMinnville zoning ordinance specific to chapter one seven point five seven landscaping, chapter one seven point five eight trees, and chapter one seven point zero six definitions.
All right. Do we need a second reading immediately, or?
No, you need to...
We've had the discussion.
Yep.
Any more discussion?
And then a motion to pass it on to a second reading.
And we have a motion to pass Ordinance Number five zero two-seven to a second reading.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Garvin and a second by Councilor Stassen's. Why does this feel out of joint here?
Because the process is different to deal with the possibility that there might not be a unanimous vote to move this to a second reading.
I rocked the boat a little bit, and this tells me, okay.
And just do a voice vote on this one.
So, is there gonna be any objection to this?
No.
Look like it? Okay, would you want to do a second reading? Is that?
But we, we need, we need, we need a voice vote on this to move it forward to a second reading. Not, not, not a, not a roll call vote, just a voice vote.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor of the motion to have a second reading of this signify by saying aye? Aye? Any opposed, say nay? David, by title only, please.
Okay. This is the second reading of ordinance number 5027, an ordinance amending the McMinnville zoning ordinance specific to chapter 17.57 landscaping, chapter 17.58 trees, and chapter 17.06 definitions.
All right, we've heard a first reading and a second reading. I'll now entertain a motion that we pass, ordinance number 2000, 5027.
So moved.
Second.
And thank you, we have a, a motion by Councilor Stassenz and a second by Councilor Garvin, and I will ask that, that Melissa pull the council, please, and ask, ask me last, please.
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Stassenz?
Aye.
Councilor Rudin?
Aye.
Councilor Jeffries?
Aye. The record show that ordinance number 5027 has passed unanimously. 5027, did I say it right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, this takes us to the first reading with possible second reading of ordinance number 5028, an ordinance amending the McMinnville City Code, chapter 2.33, specific to landscape review committee. So can I follow up on that previous one? Go ahead, Heather.
Good evening, Councilors. So the ordinance in front of you is a text amendment to the McMinnville City Code. It's, again, it's an opportunity for us to look at how updating the code and, and standardizing our processes. The landscape review committee enabling ordinance was last done in 1981 and embedded in our zoning ordinance. We have other committees and commissions embedded in the McMinnville City Code in chapter two. What we'd like to do is get all of them there and have some sort of standardization for the language for them. So what's in front of you today brings forward the authority and powers that were already in the zoning ordinance for the landscape review committee with a couple of changes. We've taken, the previous ordinance had three members appointed and then two alternates, and the alternates voted when the members weren't there. That's not a process we have for any other committee or commission. It's a very old process. We're recommending to have a five-member committee. We think that will work more effectively than three members and two alternates because people have to remember who the alternates are at the meeting when we're calling for the vote. We also have identified that we're, to operate the committee by Robert's Rules of Order. We're doing that with all of our committees. They're getting them into that process, and they've been doing it here for about six months now, and it's really helped in terms of efficiencies with the committees. We've also identified that they will be advisory to the planning director, the planning commission, and the city council, so they're not making quasi judicial decisions, but they're making advisory decisions to whoever is the authority for making the decision for that particular land use that's going in front of them. And then the two additional things that we want to start providing with all of our committees in the planning department, we are recommending that there be a youth ex officio, so an opportunity for someone under the age of 21 to participate on the committee and participate in the dialogue, but perhaps not in the voting. But it brings the opportunity for someone to learn about government processes and also brings that demographic into our conversations when we're talking about things like updating the codes and, and things of that nature. And then it also identifies the need to have an annual report to the city council. I think, as you saw with the McMinnville Affordable Housing Task Force, the opportunity for these committees and commissions that are populated with volunteers doing a lot of informative work for the city to come in front of you and talk about what they've done in the past year and what they're looking to do in the next year and get direction is a really valuable discourse, I think, to have on an annual basis. And so we're recommending having that part of the code and the enabling ordinance as well.
All right, thank you, Heather. So I will now ask, without objection, that, if there's no objection to have the, the ordinance read by title only, any objection?
No.
All right, David, would you please read the ordinance by title only?
This is a first reading for ordinance number 5028, an ordinance amending the McMinnville City Code, chapter 2.33, specific to the landscape review committee.
All right, thank you. Following the first reading, I asked the council, is there any questions for staff or any discussion you'd like to have? All right, so I will entertain a motion that we move, proceed with a second, second reading.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilor Stassenz and a, and a second by Councilor Garvin. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say nay? The motion passes, and so therefore I will ask, without objection, that David read the ordinance by title only for the second time.
Okay. This is the second reading of ordinance number 5028, an ordinance amending the McMinnville City Code, chapter 2.33, specific to the landscape review committee.
All right, we have a second reading of ordinance number 5028. I will ask the council if, all those in favor of this, or entertain a motion to pass this ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Stassenz and a second by Councilor Rudin. All those in favor signify by saying?
Roll call.
Heather, Heather, sorry, Melissa, would you please give us a roll and pull me last, please?
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Stassenz?
Aye.
Councilor Rudin?
Aye.
Councilor Jeffries?
Aye. Ordinance number 5028 has passed unanimously. Thank you. This takes us to the first reading with possible second reading of ordinance number 5029, an ordinance repealing ordinance for 267 and granting a non-exclusive gas tax franchise to Northwest Natural Gas Company. Who's got this one? David?
Sure. So as indicated, I'll refer you to the memo in your packet. The city last approved a non-exclusive gas utility franchise agreement with Northwest Natural Gas Company on October 4th, 1983, through the adoption of ordinance 4267. It was a 20-year franchise agreement that expired in 2003, although Northwest Naturals continue to operate under the authority of that agreement with the city's permission since that time. We've been, for the better part of a year now, working with Northwest Natural Gas on a revised franchise agreement that modifies and updates, modernizes a number of the, the terms and conditions of the franchise agreement. In addition, as a part of that review, we evaluated the franchise fee rates that are assessed by 20 of the cities located within the three-county area, including Polk, Washington, and Yamhill County, and found that the city of McMinnville's franchise fee of 3% was significantly below the median franchise fee amount of 5%. The range is between 3% and 5.94%, with the vast majority of those jurisdictions at, at a 5% franchise fee rate. So the ordinance before you, in addition to approving a new 20-year non-exclusive franchise for Northwest Natural Gas, would increase the franchise fee from 3% to 5%.
All right, thank you, David. Without objection, I'll ask the city attorney to read the ordinance by title only. No objection, David, please.
This is ordinance number 5029, an ordinance repealing ordinance 4267 and granting a non-exclusive gas utility franchise to Northwest Natural Gas Company.
Thank you. We've just had a first reading of ordinance number 5029, and we'll open it up to discussion or questions for staff? Any discussions? Any question? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion that we proceed with a second reading of ordinance number 5029.
So moved.
Motion by Councilor Stassenz and a second by Councilor Jopkin, I'm sorry, Garvin. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Nay? For no? And, I am tired. The motion has passed unanimously, which will take us to a second reading of ordinance number 5029 by title only, David.
This is a second reading of ordinance number 5029, an ordinance repealing ordinance 4267 and granting a non-exclusive gas utility franchise to Northwest Natural Gas Company.
Thank you. We now need a motion to, to vote on this, so I'll ask a motion for, lead to a vote for ordinance number 5029.
So moved.
Second.
A, a motion by Councilor Garvin and a second by Councilor Stassenz. Grace, Melissa, would you please pull the council and pull me last, please?
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Stassenz?
Aye.
Councilor Rudin? Councilor Jeffries?
Aye. Let us show that ordinance number 5029 has passed unanimously. All right, council, that takes us to the end of regular business and into advice and information. Vizier, any reports from the council on their committee assignments? Alan?
Couple of committee meetings we have coming up, which is tomorrow, Affordable Housing Task Force is meeting at 10 o'clock at the CDC, that's tomorrow, and then Airport Commission on Thursday night at 6:30 here at the Civic Hall.
Thank you. Wendy, anything from you?
No updates for we, first Wednesday of every month, we have urban renewal, so that's coming up, but no updates. We haven't had a meeting since last one.
Okay, Adam?
No, no YC meetings between now and last meeting.
Okay. I'm trying to think of my email here. We got an email from Remy. I think she mentions also the homeless committee coming up, and Alan, you mentioned that as well, so, all right. For me, the COG, we had a, a executive committee meeting last week, and we approved a budget, which was always exciting to do. And the first meeting with the new executive director for the COG, Sean O'Dea, he's just doing a fabulous job there, and the staff seem really pleased with his, with his placement there, which is exciting. All right, so that's it for the council. Any reports from the department heads going around? Rich?
I just want to follow up with council. As a, after the realignment and restructuring of our prevention division and, and moving towards a deputy fire marshal position, we have put a conditional offer on the table, and it has been accepted by an applicant who I believe we're all going to be very pleased with, meets all the criteria for the certifications above and beyond as far as, as we're concerned, has history in the Yamhill County, lives in McMinnville, is bilingual, is going to bring a lot to the table for our organization and to the city as a representative of the city, and the expected start date will be August 1st. And the only reason I would mention that now is because he's already notified his, his current employer that pending the conditional offer requirements, he will be accepting the position with McMinnville, and his name is Steve Candela.
All right, that's good news, thanks. Anything in the police department?
From the PD, we had tipic op last Thursday, and the police department, in conjunction with the sheriff's office, raised $3,000, just over $3,000 for Special Olympics of Yamhill County. We went down, visited our five academy recruits today. All are doing well. A couple are within two weeks of coming out of the academy and then going into training. Another is probably five weeks away, and then the two new ones are about 12, 13 weeks away, so they're ways off. I will share good news. We also have a conditional job offer out, I'm not going to name the name, but somebody that's accepted a conditional job offer, that's a lateral for us as well, so we're excited that we are getting some possible help in quicker turnaround and return on investment, so that's what we've got going.
All right, thanks, chief. Marsha, anything in finance?
No, thank you.
All right, over here. Heather, anything new? Mike? Melissa? Cor?
No.
Anything going on at the White House?
So, just real quickly, as I arrived to work this morning, multiple fire and emergency medical vehicles were surrounding the building with lights on. That's never a good thing in my experience. In fact, we did have an employee who was suffering a medical emergency. Our emergency medical staff provided rapid and complete treatment. The employee was, in fact, transported to the hospital accompanied by a coworker, another coworker called family and friends. Other coworkers in the building stepped up to take on the workload. While it was serious and scary, thankfully, the employee is home now and expected to make a full and complete recovery and expected to return to work in a couple of days. Just a testament to the fine folks that work at the city of McMinnville and how everybody stepped up above and beyond their roles and responsibilities. Makes you proud to be a member of the team here.
Thank you. Great to see him in action, isn't it? When you're not on the gurney anyways.
One other thing, want to thank the council for moving with dispatch tonight. It looks like I may actually get home in time to celebrate my wedding anniversary.
All right, well, thanks for sharing it with us. All right, so that will close the city council meeting.
Wait, there's more.
There's more. That was all a long preview for the urban renewal agency meeting, and I'll call the urban renewal agency meeting into order. So on our agenda for this meeting, we have resolution number 201706, a resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, and making appropriations and declaring tax increments. So, Marsha, could you give us a staff report on this one?
I can, thank you. As we previously mentioned, when we were talking about the city budget, the ORS does allow us to make some changes to the budget that was approved by the budget committee. And the budget that you have in front of you for 2017, 18 for the urban renewal does have a, and a, a change, and that is because of a project that was not completed in 1617, and some of the appropriations will be carried forward to 1718. And the amount was about $50,000, and it's for the Alpine Avenue Street Improvement Project.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions for staff? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
I would like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 2017-06, adopting the 2017-2018 budget in the amount of $1,925,640 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, to make the appropriations in the amount of $1,759,703, and to certify to the county assessor a request for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Plan Area for the maximum amount of revenue that may be raised by dividing the taxes under section 1C, Article 9 of the Oregon Constitution and ORS Chapter 457.
Thanks to you, Councilor Garvin. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Stassenz. We have a motion and a second, a council, a motion by Councilor Garvin and a second by Councilor Stassenz to adopt resolution number 201, sorry, 2017-06, adopting the 2017-18 budget in the amount of $1,925,640 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2017, to make the appropriations in the amount of $1,759,703, and to certify the county, and to certify to the county assessor a request for the McMinnville Urban Renewal Planning Area for the McMinn, for the maximum amount of revenue that may be raised by dividing the tax under section 1C, Article 9 of the Oregon Constitution and ORS Chapter 457. I ask those in favor to signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, say nay? Let the record show that resolution has passed unanimously. And that takes us to the end. It wasn't on the thing that we were done, so I didn't have to say. Thank you, everybody. Fane.
Good job, Councilor Jeffries.
Rocket docket.
That was a lot.
18, 19, 20 together.
Is that enough?